All right.
I could, I like.
Do you have a preview of the special session on this project?
Yeah.
Warren invited.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, so we've all, we've all seen it already.
Yeah.
Waste our time, let's just approve it and go home.
Very hungry.
It's nine thirty-five, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Nine thirty-five, and the next item on the agenda is the West Elm Furniture Store on Shellmount Street. And that is Maru's as well. It's the final development plan for a new sixteen thousand square foot retail furniture store.
I think Maru needs an assistant.
What was it?
I think you need an assistant.
Oh.
Don't give her any ideas.
Really? What are you talking about?
She said, "Don't give her any ideas."
On the record already.
Going off the London and England and all this other stuff she wants.
Okay, so this is.
Oops.
There we go. This is a FDP or a Final Development Plan for a retail pad in the Bay Street complex. By way of a background, in September of nineteen ninety-nine, the city council established a PUD or the Planned Unit Development designation and approved a PDP which is a preliminary development plan for the retail entertainment complex which is called Bay Street today. As a part of the approval, two retail pads were also approved. And to get you oriented here.
Upside down. I think you're upside down there. So I'm where you're looking from.
So this is Shellmount Street right here, Bay Street. These are their existing developments. You have the Borders right here and the, and the cinema, and IKEA is to, I'm sorry?
Barnes &amp; Noble.
Barnes &amp; Noble, I'm sorry, yeah. Barnes &amp; Noble and IKEA is towards the south here. So two retail pads that I mentioned are located here, Pad One, and then on the corner of Christie and Shellmount, Pad Two. These two are, these two are approved in the PDP along with some, along in the hotel side. And so they are now here. Madison Market is now applying for a building in Pad One. And this building is going to be a furniture store, West Elm, which is a subsidiary of Williams Sonoma Company. The building is about a little over sixteen thousand square feet and the site, this site is a little, almost under nineteen thousand square feet. To orient you again, this is a closer, Shellmount right here, Bay Street right here, and this is the pad, the ground floor level. It's going to be a one-floor with a mezzanine, and the ground level is going to have about eighty-seven hundred square foot of sales area which you can see in brown, and about thirty-five hundred square feet of stock area. On the mezzanine level, there'll be an additional of seven thousand square feet of stock area. In terms of how the circulation is going to work, it's the, there're going to be three main entries, and they're all located on the Bay Street, so here, here, and here. In terms of customer pickup, they're going to have the customer pickup at the rear of the building or the south of the building, and there'll be customer parking here and the loading activities will be restricted to the back of the building. In terms of the total parking that the structure would generate, that is accommodated in the overall Bay Street parking garage, and it was analyzed at that time. So the parking for the retail component is, will be accommodated in the existing Bay Street parking, parking garage. In terms of design, I know that the applicant has a fairly extensive presentation, so I'm going to go very quickly. And it's, let's see if I can do a wide. This is the Shellmount Street facade. It's a contemporary building. The height of the building varies from twenty-three feet to thirty-nine and a half feet. It's got a butterfly roof. These are elevations. This is the one facing IKEA, and this is the one facing Bay Street. In terms of the overall rendering, this sort of gives you the idea of how it's going to look in the context. You'll get better, prettier pictures when the applicant does his presentation. As a part of this project, there's also signage, where there's one large sign and five smaller signs. These are the, these five smaller signs are in all four facades, and the bigger sign is this one right here. Again, the details are in the part of your package. There are a lot of, this is landscaping elements as well, primarily, let me see. You have landscaping in terms of planters right here, 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 here. They're going to be including three street trees and two trees on their property. Also, as a part of the project, what is going to happen is a reorientation of the entry to the Bay Street garage. The top portion is the existing entry to the Bay Street garage. You have, this is Bay Street right here. There are two lanes going into the garage in pink and yellow, and they total about twenty-eight feet. This is, and then you have some parking, existing parking, which is generally used by not.
Twenty-eight feet in width?
I'm sorry?
Twenty-eight feet in width.
Yes, of the two lanes combined.
Correct.
And, and then you have some parking here, which is primarily used not for patrons but basically by the Madison Market's crew. That is going to be, the proposal is, what's going to happen is that you come in, this is Bay Street again, this is going to get reduced to sixteen feet, and as it goes down the site, it, it turns into two lane at, at, right before it enters into the garage. The exit out of the garage remains unchanged. Pedestrian study, pedestrian or traffic movement study was done for, regarding this change, and they, and the conclusion was that there's not going to be any kind of unsafe queuing and both the pedestrian and the traffic should flow. The, the study was also reviewed by the city engineer who concurs with the findings. That sort of ends my presentation. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer. Just a little bit in terms of process of how the FDP works, you are being asked to make a recommendation to the city council, and the final approval or a final decision would be taken by the city council. Currently, it's scheduled to go to the council on August seventh. So with that, that concludes my presentation. If you have questions.
Maru?
Go ahead.
Maru, could you mention something about the stormwater treatment and the green roof?
Right. A green roof is accommodated, I don't have the graphic in, let me see. The green roof is on a portion of the roof right here, and in terms of storm, the project does comply with the stormwater requirements, and green roof addresses part, portion of it, and there are also planters which are, flow-through planters along around the site in terms of what you see as landscaped areas. Here, here, and here.
And those will be part of the stormwater treatment system?
That's correct. We have also proposed a solar system on the roof. The plans do state that it's, it may be possible, it's not a guarantee, right? You're still constrained, you're still under review.
Questions, Maru?
I have questions.
Go ahead.
I have one question about the entry area for cars where the, where it's, the lane has been narrowed. When there are events at Bay Street, that is already kind of an area that, in my experience, gets really backed up along Shellmount. What, how does this not have an impact? I mean, what, how is that addressed? Because I don't see how narrowing it and just adding the entryways for the parking lots there for, into the garage would address that.
So basically, we're eliminating one of the entrance lanes into the parking structure.
Into the, that is correct.
Right.
But isn't there an entry to the parking structure directly off Shellmount if you're going north on Shellmount?
No, you can't turn.
They've got it closed off for some reason.
You can't, that's been closed.
Why is that closed if, I don't understand.
My understanding is they reconfigured it to try to address the queuing.
Yeah, yeah.
Force people at the stoplight, this gives the two lanes, right?
The only, the only alternative would be to direct them all the way down to the north end of the Bay Street, and then they're going to the garage from that.
We have their traffic person here to address that, but I'd just like to ask Commissioner Branco for one point of clarification. Are you sure you're thinking of this intersection and not the one at Aloni?
I'm thinking of the first intersection that is right next to IKEA.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's this.
And that one is also an issue.
Right.
But it wasn't part of this.
That's another story.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Abrams, traffic engineer, so I've been working for Madison Marquette on a lot of the Bay Street issues over time. Basically, this, this entrance, this entrance roadway into the parking lot, I mean, while that part of it is narrow, it's narrowed, it's really unchanged from what's there right now and will not introduce any further problem. There's still a single lane that turns off of Shellmount that turns into the site. Right now, it would, just as soon as you make that right angle turn behind what will be the building, it widens out to twenty-eight feet.
Can you point to the, can you point to the drawing on the overhead so they can see what you're talking about?
Yeah. Right, right now, as you make the turn, it widens into this twenty-eight-foot section just in the back part of the building. With the new plan, it just carries that one-lane section further along behind the building. In, in effect, those two lanes are not used there right now. There is rarely ever two cars going side by side with the exception of maybe bypassing somebody.
You're saying there's only one lane coming into the project from Shellmount Street?
That's right.
Which is one of our questions.
And there are, you will still have the same two lanes that enter into the garage, and that queue that, at the entry to the garage, never extends beyond the limits of what is shown on the bottom diagram. That queue, if the, if there's any queues that occur in that area right now, it is really because of the parked, parked cars that back into the aisle and slow down traffic while they are trying to maneuver in and out. That, that issue gets removed with the new plan where those parking spaces are not there.
Is there a signal at that intersection on Shellmount or not?
Yes, there is. And there is a separate left turn lane that supplies most of the traffic that comes into the garage.
So, so I have a, and my, my concern was, I go to Bay Street a lot, and I go to IKEA a lot, and I also come that way every day from work, and I know that whenever there are events and during peak shopping hours, there already is a backup in that right lane when you're traveling north on Shellmount. So narrowing that one lane, narrowing that two-one lane from the current two, you say is no change, which I think would actually worsen it because it's bad now during events for parking. The other thing is that if you narrow that lane and you've got that short drop-off area, I'm assuming that's for like cars who are just dropping off, people who are then going to go shopping and the car moves on, that right now is a big space, and with the shuttle stopping there and a car, I can't tell here how much, how mu, how much of vehicle space there is in that little area. Can you explain about how big that is?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you just adjust that so this is completely on the screen? Down so we can see the existing? Thank you.
Let me see if I can explain that, you know, this, there's nothing in this project that affects Shellmount Street itself. All the changes are in the back of the building. And that area back there in that, in the section from where you can see this new crosswalk to the area where it starts to widen out is, is really never, it's never a capacity problem. There's delay and all there through, because of pedestrian crossings, because of the cars that in the existing condition are backing out of these various parking spaces along here.
This is restricted parking, and so people don't park there. There, I've seen maybe three cars there. That hasn't been an issue as far as I've ever seen. It's the cars that are making that right turn onto the, you know, into the parking area.
Off of, are you talking about this, this turn here?
Yes, when they're coming, heading north on Shellmount, and they make that right turn into that area. And I don't know if it's a lighting issue combined with a pedestrian issue, but it seems like it would worsen the problem by going from the lanes opening to two lanes sooner. Plus, you've got a decrease in the area that you're calling, I think it's a drop-off zone. So that means shuttle bus and a car may not be able to fit there now because are under this proposed space because the current space will accommodate a shuttle and a car if you're dropping off someone, and this one will be even smaller.
You're talking about up here in this area?
Yes. So this one will be smaller, shorter, plus a narrower lane, and you have to go, you know, good ways before the access to the garage opens up into two lanes.
You've, you've outlined a scenario that I, I, I mean, I just don't, that is, we don't, do not believe that's going to occur with this, with this process.
Hi Cedric Young, Madison Marquette. Right now, this is currently a customer drop-off area, and we don't have a shuttle bus there.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Emery Go-Round stops there.
Is that right?
Yes.
Because that's really a primary.
The Emery Go-Round shops on Shellmount Street.
Well, I've seen the Emery Go-Round enter there, and I couldn't stop to pick up my son because the Emery Go-Round and one of the vehicles for like the senior.
Inside the Madison Marquette driveway?
Yeah, in that, unless they made a mistake.
I don't think, Emery Go-Round doesn't typically go that way.
I know, it usually stops at the corner across from the hotel. So I don't know if this was a special case or if a driver made a mistake.
Yeah, because we actually created this little drop-off area now, not for the, the Emery Go-Round or any shuttle, it was mainly for customer drop-off, and that's what it's.
Right. Well, so maybe this was a rare occasion when the shuttle came, but.
I think when we had the planning commission tour a year or so ago, we had an Emery Go-Round bus, and I think we stopped there.
I can remember that.
That may have been what you saw.
The, the day that I happened to be there, there was an Emery Go-Round shuttle that went in, and I had to wait on that, and there was, you know, one of the senior shuttle buses that take seniors around, and so I actually had to stop and wait a couple of cars behind those two because there was an event at Bay Street that weekend, and so there were cars on the left-hand side that, you know, I couldn't pull around because of the shuttles. And ma, again, maybe that was a once in a blue moon kind of thing, but it just seems to me that narrowing those two lanes to one and decreasing that drop-off area because you've got people dropping kids off to movies, book, you know, the bookstore run, and then it, you've just got less space to work with there.
And create a queuing problem.
Yeah. I mean, and it was, it's, it's just a problem during events, but it's at, you know, all the peak times.
It seems to me that.
I think these are good points, but what I'd like to do is finish going through the presentation and then open the public hearing and then actually go back to the discussion. What we'll focus on now are questions, and I think we've gotten an explanation of what you're trying to accomplish here, and it sounds like this is exactly the same concern I expressed to the applicant when I had a meeting with them a couple months ago. So we can return to this issue and try to resolve it when we have the commissioner discussion. But let's complete the presentation, and Maru, I think you were finished?
Yes.
And then the applicant was going to make a presentation, unless there are any other traffic-related questions for Charlie before he sits back down.
Or we could get into them after the discussion.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maru. Planning Commissioners Chairperson Martin, my name's Cedric Young, from Madison Marquette, the developer of Bay Street. This final development application for the south retail pad is being presented by the tenant, West Elm, the architect, McCall Design Group, and Madison Marquette Bay Street. The members of our team that are here this evening are, include Christina Spalding of West Elm, Mike McCall and Cyrus Amani Tadeshi of McCall Design Group, Brent Bucknum of Reyna Creek Landscape Architects, Jason Long with BKF Civil Engineers, and Charles Abrams from Abrams and Associates Traffic Engineers. We'd like to also thank staff, Charlie, Maru, Peter, Maurice, Michelle, and George, and the planning commissioners we were able to meet with for their constructive design input. And with that, I'd like to introduce Mike McCall, President of McCall Design Group.
Thank you Cedric. Chair, Vice Chair, Distinguished Commissioners, thank you very much. I know that everybody's a little bit tired, it's been a long evening. I'd like to first introduce the fact that this, we, our client is, is, is Williams Sonoma Inc., and you guys know Williams Sonoma Inc., I think. They are, were founded in nineteen fifty-six and are the premier specialty retailers of home furnishings throughout the United States. The brand we're going to be presenting to you tonight, the project is West Elm, which is for Emeryville at Bay Street. West Elm is a fresh and modern concept with stylish, high-quality furniture and accessories for every room in the house, and it's designed as a, oh, contemporary, fresh, innovative. These are some examples of some other projects. Each location is treated as a, as a unique context. They're not done like a lot of retailers where there's a specific, a specific face. We have some trade dress, but we do unique projects for each, each site. So the, the furniture, tableware and lighting and bedding are all presented within this sort of loft-like retail space. We, we know that we're talking more about the exterior, but I want you to get a feel for what the, the concept really is, and these are some of, some of the stores that they have in their portfolio. Now let's look at West Elm for Bay Street. This is the site, I think you're all very familiar with the site, it sounds like a lot of you go there. When you zoom in from the ubiquitous Google, Google Earth sort of viewpoint, you can see it. When you look from the air from the west, we're really in that little grassy area, and it's the last incomplete portion of the center. This is the opportunity we have to really create it, to create a, a nice urban edge on Shellmount, something that will be pedestrian-appropriate, and will create another gateway to, the final gateway to the Bay Street project. This is looking from the southwest. Here's what we propose from that view. It's a, again, meant to close the, to front the street, to become the edge of Shellmount, to come around and to create the pedestrian access to the center. Looking back from the center toward the, towards San Francisco, this is what you would see on what one might consider the parking lot side, but we're very interested in downplaying the parking lot aspect and upplaying the sense that it's a street, that it's a place, that it's a place to get to by cycle, it's a place to get to by foot, and it completes the project itself. So you've looked briefly at the site plan, I think you know the center a little bit, you can see the West Elm, the footprint there next to the, the bookstore. This is existing conditions, site plan, and the proposed condition site plan. We can talk a lot about access, but one of the things we're very excited about is that we are completing this pedestrian promenade and creating a vista point and a point of access to the, to the, to the store from this, from Bay Street, also from Shellmount. We're proposing that this will become very pedestrian-friendly. We have views into the store, we have little pockets of landscaping, we have an increased streetscape. We can then enter the store off of that promenade and directly this way. There's a customer drop-off for, primarily for these people over here. We have gotten rid of all the parking that comes in here, created a place to safely pull off and to queue and to come back out for customer pickup because it's a furniture store. And then we have continued the one-lane access into the parking garage, so there should be no extensive or no increased queuing. Actually, the light, signal light allows a certain number of cars in which can easily be accommodated by the distance that we have before it turns back into the two ways of getting into the parking structure itself. Floor plan, just so you will know, it's a furniture concept. Again, it's, it's about vignettes, it's about creating rooms, it's about selling, you know, lifestyle. We certainly hope that you approve those additional condominium units because that's a big part of the customer base. This is the little bit of upper story for stock primarily, and this is the show window that you can see that we've created from up above to sort of engage the freeway as a spectator as well, which is part of your landscape. The roof is, is kind of a unique and interesting aspect of the building. We have three, three primary areas. This portion, which is the barrel vault, which is all a living roof and landscaped extensively, which we will have a little bit of a presentation from the Rana Creek consultant that we're working with on the roof and the, and the landscaping. This area is a little bit lower, it's sheltered, that's where we want to do primarily the mechanical equipment. And this area is the butterfly roof, which is butterfly in its parapets where we're hoping, and we can't promise yet, that we will put in some photovoltaics. This project is currently registered as a pilot project in the lead for retail, new construction with the U.S. Green Building Council, and that, that is something that we're all excited about. It's also, Williams Sonoma Inc. is in, is in, is just embarking on an endeavor to create a much more environmental-friendly presence as a whole, especially in the retail, so this is a pilot project with Williams Sonoma as well. You've looked briefly at the elevations. This is the Bay Street elevation, lots of transparency and show windows. This is the south-facing elevation which you would see as you approach from Shellmount. Again, corner glazing, the upper level, the, the signage that you can see as you're coming at the speed of, of that street. The inner court, which faces toward the parking and towards the, the center itself, we have listened to a couple of the, a number of people, including staff and commissioners, about creating a sense of transparency, so we've continued the transparency, the green walls, the louver system, and included more and more ins and outs on this facade to try to make it engage the, the center. This is from Shellmount, and again, the green roof, a lot of transparency, ins and outs and landscaping. This is the final sort of view that, that I wanted to show you before I turn it over to our cons, other consultants, but this is, gives you an idea of how it looks in context and, and how we're trying to create this, this gateway to the Bay, oops? The Bay Street, the complex, again, the pedestrian-friendly nature of it and the, the green nature of the project. I'd, I'd like to introduce Brent Bucknum from Rana Creek to talk some about the, the landscape and the green roof, et cetera. Thank you.
Good evening. I hope I can provide a little enjoyment and motivation here at ten o'clock in the evening for you guys. This is actually a really exciting project for us, where an ecological design consultant work on many levels from large municipal projects to commercial, academic, museum projects throughout the country, and this is the first time we've really been able to integrate this type of work into a retail store. So I'm really compelled by the client and architects' motivation to do this. It's not something that, there's any precedent to do in retail development, and it's hard to, to do this type of innovative green work. So it's exciting for us. We took on a project that's a lot smaller than what we normally do, but exciting to get into this retail market, and one of the things we're trying to do is really use living roof technologies that we know are steadfast and are going to perform extremely well with low maintenance, and then utilize some landscape features that blend some of the existing plant communities that are used there in this area of Bay Street, but also emphasize this as a pilot project to be utilizing extremely drought-tolerant native plants. Some of the plant species we've chosen for the roof here, I'll jump through into one of the renderings here. Some of the plants we've chosen for the roof provide habitat for migratory birds, provide habitat for rare and endangered butterflies, for other very unique species, and this is such a compelling thing to do in this place in Emeryville so close to the, the bay and to provide some connectivity from habitat, and I always love to replace turf grass areas with ecologically viable conditions. The other really compelling thing here is that even, even though they could just to The other really compelling thing here is that even though they could just have chosen to put a little green roof postage stamp on a project like a lot of people are doing, we've really worked between McCall Group, ourselves, and the civil engineer to make this an extremely integrated, sustainable stormwater project. And so I'll just show you some of the quick schematics here. But essentially what we've been doing is we've turned, as you can see, essentially every potential space that we could occupy with vegetation into planted areas. And we've even taken that up the walls to decrease heat island effect, to increase the ability of this plant material to take up particulate matter, to further diminish the impact of the building. In addition to the infiltration planters and pretreatment planters, we're also looking at the potential to incorporate a rainwater catchment system to, that would essentially provide greater than LEED demands of water for the irrigation of the roof and the ground plane in the summer, which is going to be minimal to begin with because it's extremely drought-tolerant vegetation. And so what we're also doing to increase water savings is using evapotranspiration-controlled satellite irrigation systems, which minimize the use of irrigation. You don't have these effects where it's spilling out into the street when it's raining and issues like that. And we are integrating the filtration from the roof, the catchment of pure cleaner water from that butterfly roof for catchment, and treating all of the water that runs off of any sidewalks or any roofs to meet and exceed both the Emeryville standards and the LEED standards for all site conditions. So that's a little bit of an overview. I'll just quickly run through some of the design parameters of how a living roof's built for anyone that doesn't know, but if there's more specific questions, I'm not going to try to consume too much of your time here. Essentially, what we're looking at is a drainage course above a waterproof membrane that gets 20 or 25-year warranties from the manufacturer, a soil column of about three to five and a half inches of soil, and then these planted bio trays, which we actually developed for the Academy of Sciences in San Francisco, which allows us to pre-vegetate these trays at our nursery, improve the look when it gets installed, as well as the performance, and reduce the maintenance demands once it's installed. The roof, as I was saying before, is an assemblage and mixture of coastal scrub plant communities that would have once occurred in this type of condition, from self-heal, which was used by Native Americans for skin lacerations, to wild strawberries that once grew here, to a variety of other wild flower species. So here are a couple images of those plants that will be on the roof.
Do you have a fabric on top of that to hold the soil initially until you got plant growth established?
That's one of the benefits of using the trays actually, because we grow them out in the nursery for about six to eight months before they get transported to the roof. And there's about 60 or 80 percent coverage at that point. So we do these trays as an alternative to the jute netting or fabric that we've used on some projects, but in a lot of extensive research we've done, we find this to get much better coverage.
So do the trays degrade after?
Yeah, they're biodegradable, and we designed them as an alternative to the plastic modular trays that have been developed for roofs. And these are actually made out of coconut core that's sustainably harvested and held together with natural latex.
So the trays are interlocking?
The trays will be interlocking grid pattern like bricks. And then over about a five to seven-year period, they break down, at which point the roots have taken over to stabilize this. And we're using a similar system on much, much steeper conditions at the academy, if any of you have seen that.
Just in a much more exposed condition at this location, it's going to be a challenge if the material's not kept in place. So it's great, it sounds like you've thought through it carefully. Have you considered the wind situation here?
Yeah.
Really fierce.
Yeah, we've been looking at that, and that's, to some extent, the design of the roof accommodates that in providing more aerodynamic condition. And the plant materials that we've chosen, like the strawberry, the wild beet strawberry is amazing at being a rhizome and a spreading plant and developing really intense root structures.
Plants with tall stems are just going to get blown to pieces.
Those, some of those wildflowers are only out for a few, about a month and a half in the spring, after the intensive weather and wind and wet season, kind of in that April, spring season. And indeed, some of them will get blown, but that's what we want, spread the seeds. So this is quickly, just a few of the details of the rain garden conditions that we're creating, as well as some of the infiltration planters that will pretreat the water before it goes to our rain and water catchment cistern or overflow cistern drain. Couple plants on the ground plane. And on the ground plane, what we've tried to do is a mixture of plants that'll continue the plant communities that are being used there, that are definitely drought-tolerant, but are also tried and true plants that require really minimal maintenance and can deal with treading. So that's about it there.
I'm curious about the, there's potential for a lot of these, the catchment, the distribution, there's a potential for some obstruction or complication in the circulation of your system? And I'm wondering...
Obstruction in the water flow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Both in distribution and in the collection. And so I'm wondering what your experience has been, given how delicate, on some levels, how delicate the cover is. It's not like just a jasmine or something that you're sticking up there, some hardy plant. This is a fairly complex, delicate system that you're establishing. And I'm wondering...
On the living roof?
Yeah. What's your experience is in terms of long-term maintenance? And what happens when you go in and you've got to fix the system, whether it's a 20-year interval or something short of that? And whether the landscape plan calls for rebuilding that vegetative layer to its original condition as a requirement? I don't have any landscape plan in here that says this is how we're going to address a problem up there and make sure we don't have something that tears open with wind or some other factor that ends up destroying the whole roof if someone doesn't understand the complexity and goes up there and tries to fix a leak or tries to fix the portion that isn't getting irrigated or is ponding because the collection system is obstructed.
Well, we've had, no, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just wondering where that's defined and whether you have experience addressing that as a short-term or long-term problem.
Yeah, we've been pioneering the design of living roofs in California for about 15 years. And so we've been addressing a lot of these issues, and maintenance is one of those concerns. And so over time, what we've developed is a variety of detailed ecological maintenance specifications, which would accompany the construction documents here. So that, what we also do is really start to detail and break out the different elements of the construction process, so that the waterproofing is all defined specifically within one contract, and then the landscape installation under another. And we feel that that makes it much clearer as far as repair and replacement for waterproofing issues. From the landscape level, it does take training. And what we often do is write into our CA, our Construction Administration process, detailed training for the maintenance crews that are going to be taking this on. The other element that we do is we provide a much longer establishment period maintenance timeframe that the contractor who installs the project is required to commit to. And that really improves the process too, because a lot of those glitches and issues do happen early in training the long-term maintenance contractors. And then in addition to that establishment maintenance process, we develop also a detailed long-term maintenance manual for the roof. And the environmental conditions that exist around there go into the plant material choices that we've made. And the ones we're using here have actually gone, all gone through about three or four years of detailed research funded by the California Academy of Sciences, under similarly intense wind conditions.
Great, that's what I wanted to hear.
So are these, are these complete plant schedules or are these just preliminary plant schedules that you're...
This was preliminary, and we're going to actually, as we get further into the construction documents, provide a broader range of plants for the rain gardens and those features on the ground plane, and incorporate some more natives there as well.
I'm just also, I'm wondering, how did you come, how did you come to choose the Lombardy poplar as a street tree?
That was a combination of some recommendations from planners, as well as this goal of providing...
They're going to tear the sidewalk up in a very, very short time.
Okay.
Yeah. That one should, that one should be switched out.
Okay, that's fine.
Unfortunately, it's been a problem elsewhere.
Okay. Yeah, that's flexible, we can, we can change that. I would encourage your recommendations.
Any other questions?
Could you describe the green wall? Is that, it's not vines, it's something with little pots? How does it work?
Yeah, we're actually, as you can see in some of those images, as well as on the plan, we're looking at two different options. One is which is actually a soil, soil, a small soil-based system that are modular trays that are hung on a rack with like a French cleat. And that is actually a soil-based system to support more sedums and succulents, as well as looking at green grid, which is essentially an advanced trellis technology. So those are the two systems that we're looking at right now. It will definitely be a green screen application, and potentially some areas of the living wall might be these soil-based systems. Some of the manufacturers are elevated landscape technologies out of Canada, and we ourselves are designing a lot of prototypes for those.
So have those been tested for some period of time, the soil-based systems?
They have.
How long have they been around?
The, I would say, eight to 10 years.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Art.
There's no landscape plan in this proposal that was given us. And I'm especially concerned about the street front on Shellmont Street. There's no way to know how wide the sidewalks are, what the size of the planters are. Is there some other information?
I'm not sure if you got the, did you see the planting plan that was provided here?
I don't think so.
If you look on sheet A 101, it gives the sidewalk dimensions and shows the landscape areas.
101?
A 101.
We, I have a landscape plan here in my set, so I'm not sure if it didn't get printed.
What's the sheet number?
What's the sheet number?
LC 1.1.
That's here.
The landscape plan, the civil engineering plans, and as well as on sheet A 101, has the dimensions on the sidewalks.
It's there.
Yeah.
What did it say, five feet, two inches?
That's within, on the city, on the applicant's property, on the south side is five point, five feet, eight inches, but then there's also city right-of-way.
Six feet.
It's well over six feet when you include the city right-of-way sidewalk. You're looking at the entrance right off of Shellmont, on the north side of the building.
Yeah. If you see the property line, we've actually set back from the property line.
Can you put that, put that down on the overhead, please?
Can I put it up?
That's, yeah. Can we have the overhead?
He'll put it up.
Along Shellmont Street, the building is set back 5.2 feet from the property line, is that what I'm reading?
That's correct. And then the sidewalk is an additional six feet.
Another six feet?
Because we're trying to create the diversity and interest for the pedestrian by having the setbacks and giving us place for not only the landscape and the rainwater treatment, but also just to create a sense of diversity.
But there's no landscaping at all at this whole part of the building?
Oh, yeah, there is. You want to?
There's actually a living wall feature on that part of the building.
Oh, I thought that was at the other end, no.
There's some on the other end as well. They're on the three different sides of the building. But we actually utilized the living wall feature there because we are so constrained. And it's...
Well, and then right at the front, it's where the major utilities for the project come in. So at the corner of Shellmont and Bay.
I'm looking at the area under the roof. There's no landscaping along that.
Does it?
Isn't there a living wall there?
It's over here.
Is this, is this a, is there a small living wall here?
The whole thing is there.
It's right there. It's right there.
But the landscape plan doesn't show landscape.
There, you can see it here.
That should be covered.
And there's a little one there.
I think...
This is a little bit difficult to read, and I apologize, but from this area to in here, it's all filled with existing underground utilities that are coming into the side. So we've tried to stay away from that area in terms of extensive landscaping. Then along the front, we've maintained all the, or what I think consider the front, the existing landscape that's part of the project, the palm trees, et cetera. So does that help?
Yes, thank you. And there is, it says living wall, sea plant schedule called out on the LC 1.1.
And if you look at the perspective drawing on sheet A 401...
I have that up on the screen too.
Oh, it's not showing.
It's not showing right now, sorry.
Can we switch to the laptop, please? Thank you. You can see that there is a combination of the living wall and the street trees and the green roof, all of which creates, you know, a fairly lush landscaped effect, even though if you look at that in plan view, you're not going to see much.
That's right. And then that's the area where we've done extensive show windows as well.
And also too, that would allow for an adequate width for sidewalks, so the pedestrian doesn't have to move in and out.
I was concerned that the sidewalk, from the building to the end of the curb, it's like almost 11 feet?
In some areas, yes, that's correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Was that, are you finished with your presentation?
We were going to have one last person to give a great pitch, if that's okay with you.
Love to listen.
This is Christina Spalding.
I'll be there, sure.
Okay.
From Williams Sonoma Inc., who's...
Hi, I'm Christina.
My client.
I'm the senior design manager for Williams Sonoma, specifically West Elm. And I just wanted to express how excited we are as a company to be a part of the Emeryville retail environment, especially since we are right across the bay, as our headquarters are over there. And we are very excited about the location of our site in proximity to the freeway and the exposure we're going to have, and also with a planned residential community that Bay Street is going to have. And, you know, also listening to the discussions this evening, that potential other residential communities will be growing. And I think, we handed out some catalogs, if you're not familiar with our merchandise, but we actually are going into having more organic, more green merchandise. And it's great that we are doing a LEED-certified building in the Bay Area to kind of reflect that we are trying to become a green company as a whole. And so this is sort of our launching pad store. This is really exciting for us to have this, and especially being so close to our headquarters, our whole company is going to see this, and we want to roll it out to Williams Sonoma, Pottery Barns, Pottery Barn Kids. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Go ahead, Anthony.
So my questions are not about the building. I think the building is fabulous, looking through this, I was really excited. But I still have concerns about the, just the traffic pattern.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't know that...
Well, we have, did you read, did you get a chance to read the report yet?
I did, but I also...
You don't believe us, huh?
So I tend to believe my experiences.
Okay, well, we're not making it worse. That is what we're telling you. So we can't really tell you any more than that. We've done studies, we've looked, we've observed it, we've looked at how you queue now with the light frequencies. We know how many cars can get into that area at a time, and we've maintained enough, more than enough, to accommodate the cars that come into that specific little section that we are trying, that we are, and that we need to do that in order to achieve a number of very important goals that are sort of fundamental to the project. One, the square footage of the building and the footprint of the building in order for our oper-
One, the square footage of the building and the footprint of the building in order for our operations to work is a little bit constricted. It's less than an ideal site in terms of its footprint. So, that's why we've worked with the developer in order to get that footprint. That's why we are proposing the single lane, but we're also getting rid of some of the other obstructions. In particular, the parallel, perpendicular parking along that building is probably the worst situation that you can have. So we're more than mitigating that. Then, when we did the studies, we came back and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, he left, he left, he ran off with the notion that the queuing actually is, is not any greater because it's not, the two lanes don't, aren't filled with two lanes worth of traffic. It's a single lane that has a duration of the light that allows you to get enough people to basically come close to filling that up and then they go in. The, the bigger problem is people who are not capable of pushing the button and that's what causes the, the parking garage.
And so I, I just wanna say this. I don't see this as a, as a problem on the site necessarily. So maybe this is something that needs to be looked at, you know, with the city because one of the things that it seems could be done is to have the queuing lane happen in the turnoff that's currently closed, where you go from Shellmount to the garage.
Oh, that's the, the egg, the one-way exit lane only.
I, I did. Booby-trapped.
What, what we, um, we're talking with our operations folks and what we've discussed is in times of peak conditions, which I, I'm sure you have experienced that. There are times when there's a blockbuster opening at the movies that it does get congested, but as a way to relieve that is to open up that entrance by IKEA to allow more cars in there and give, and then hopefully, and then we were thinking about also more aggressively directing cars to the other two entrances. You still have Aloney and Christie that we can direct cars into the garage. We think that the Christie Avenue entrance into the garage is very underutilized as a garage and we, and, and we're looking at some additional signage to just direct more shoppers and visitors towards that end of the site and that, to show them that, you know, it's, I, I think it's a matter of training shoppers that this, you can get in the side and it's, it's not any worse than the other two entrances.
I might just add, we were just checking some of, I mean, there is no regularly scheduled shuttle bus that comes through this route. It must have been a rare, occasional event that somebody must have dropped something off. The 16-foot dimension really is chosen too because that is wide enough for anybody to bypass a car that has stopped at the curb on either side and still have room for a vehicle to pass. So, this incident that you were describing could occur with any of these, any of these. This system really works well. We studied all of the, the traffic conditions over the Memorial Day weekend. In fact, it was both that Friday and Saturday night in the early evening. Later on in that night, the parking garage, full signs had come up because it had filled up about seven o'clock. The Pirates movie had opened that weekend.
One of the things that came up, and when I'm, when I had the privilege of meeting with them, they said they would definitely put a sign there when it got backed up, "Please go to the next entrance" and I think that would be a big help. To just have a directional sign there.
And we've talked about the same thing and that is the intention to.
You know, and, and, and I think the developer agreed that he would do that.
Yes, he says he will.
Yes.
Can someone speak to the pedestrian crossing that comes out of the garage into the loading area rather than onto a sidewalk? Is there something that?
Yeah, what we've done is, uh, we, there's something, I guess we didn't, we did fail to talk about it and if you look at, if you look at, is this on? I gotta push it.
The overhead's on.
No, uh, what, what we've done is we've created a, it doesn't show up here. Oh, we do need the laptop on then. It doesn't really show up here.
It's the, yeah, the crosswalk on the, on the left side.
Yeah, okay.
Closer to the garage entrance. That comes from the garage stairs.
So what we've done is that we have got, we have, the developer has agreed to dedicate a, a number of spaces right across from our store for West Elm customers. And since it's a furniture store and it's not just a, you know, like a bag like if it was clothing, there can be a little bit more things. They can go get their car and come here and stop. We've created a crosswalk that would allow them to come directly across to the customer service and pick up something that wasn't necessary for them to pull. And this area is for pickup as well. But that could be sofas or something large. That could be when you've ordered something and it finally arrives, you get a call, you would come in here and come and park. Someone would load your car or your, your vehicle. This is for the customer in a day-to-day event where they would come, get their car from the parking garage, pull up here near the exit, walk across to customer service, ring the bell, get their stuff and bring it right back across and into those four spaces. So we're doing that to create, again, to make it better for, uh, just a life safety issue, to have a dedicated crosswalk with texture, et cetera, so that, does that answer the question?
Yeah, I guess so.
Any other questions?
It, it's primarily, we didn't want to have the customer pickup backing onto that drive. We want that segregated from the drive. It's within the parking lot.
Well, would the customer pickup area also be the area for loading trucks that are bringing?
Yes, that's correct. That's the loading, you back into the building right here.
So would that be at, at sort of non, I, I mean, at hours like midnight? Cause I'm thinking of potential conflicts between, you know, semi-trucks or something coming in to unload merchandise with people coming in there.
It's early in the morning.
Early in the morning, sort of like with IKEA?
There, there's center rules, whatever, those rules that have already been agreed upon.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, let's actually, was that it for your presentation?
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. You guys have been great.
Okay, so with that, let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? If so, this is your opportunity to step up.
Only if you live in the area.
Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Let's start with questions. Any more questions of, of staff or the applicant and then we'll go into discussion. Anyone else have some questions?
I, I guess I've got one final question here. The, the stucco treatment and the sort of the tan parts of the building, what type of stucco? Is that gonna be like a smooth finish? Is it gonna be a textured finish?
Do you wanna, you wanna talk to the finishes? Do you, are you familiar enough with them?
Why don't you grab that portable microphone right there?
So these are standard finishes that we use pretty much across the board for a typical West Elm that you saw in the presentation. It's a plaster finish. We use two different colors, a tan and a chocolate brown, just to delineate the different surfaces and different, uh, different planes of the building. And this is just, um, interior brick we use, as you saw. We've got the two window walls inside and this is, we treat a lot of the interior surfaces with this, with this, oh, sorry, with this brick. And all of our cabinets are made out of this, this, uh, this, this oak, uh, this balsa wood and it's sort of big and chunky and loft-like. This is sort of our, if we have frosted glass, this is sort of the transparency that you'll see. And then this is our Vista Wall storefront system color. It's a dark, dark brown. And this is our typical awning fabric. It's, it's a black. But again, as you saw, there's gonna be lots of greenery all over the.
Which was the stucco?
This is the plaster. Those two colors.
I like that color. It's a nice taupey color.
This is sort of our accent color.
Yeah, I like it. It's a little bit, it, it looks a little bit lighter in the, in the elevations and, yeah, and I, and I, I like this much better.
Yeah.
It's richer looking.
Yeah, we're, we actually just built a store down in Florida where the color came out way too light and my boss really had a problem with it. So we're trying to get it back down to, to our typical sample.
Okay, great.
Any other questions before I start mine? Maru, there was a, in the staff report, there is reference to, um, pad number one and pad number two. Do you have a map that shows those? Are they, are we, is there another development that's gonna be coming down pad number two at some point?
Not, we have not had any application or any rumor or nothing.
Well, pad two and the hotel are now both part of Site B.
Okay.
So that they're north of Christie and they've been subsumed by Site B.
So this is the last development opportunity in this part of Bay Street. Okay, I just wanted to clarify where that pad location was. One of the things I expressed a concern to the applicant when I met with them a month or two ago was the display, the large illuminated display area which will be visible from the freeway and wanted to see some language that controlled what, how that would be used for advertising. It's one thing to have display there. When I look at the changes in advertising on the exterior of Bay Street, it alarms me from what was approved as part of the Master Sign Program to what is turning into an advertising, the whole building is turning into a billboard. And that is not what we approved in the Master Sign Program and it, it bothers me that we had language that was so vague that what was supposed to be the only real architectural element at the southwest corner of Bay Street, which was an illuminated aluminum frame system that turned colors at night, is now basically billboards. I don't want that, given its visibility from the freeway, the fact that it's gonna be illuminated at night and it's across the street from an existing billboard, I don't want that turning into, um, something other than your intention, which I don't have a problem with your intention.
Do you want us to put a restriction on window signs?
I, I just, I, yeah, go ahead and maybe first describe what your vision is there, cause we really didn't talk about it and it's a major.
Usually for West Elm, we never have window posters. We have lifestyle setups in the windows with bedroom furniture, a display wall with, you know, our artwork and stuff in it, painted different visual colors. Sometimes there might be a graphic behind it, but it's just, it, it's nothing, you know, saying West Elm all over it. It's really talking about our furniture, our decorative accessories, our bedding. They might have a home office set up in one window, bedroom in the next window. Our visual team, especially in West Elm, is incredibly creative and they really like having display windows to actually put merchandise in.
Yeah, one of the, I mean, this is not on the street level, so the visibility of this to most people other than those cars whizzing by is going to be very brief and I'm just, I'm not even sure how successful it's going to be in conveying anything to people driving by on the freeway, frankly. And, um, it's gonna, it would be wonderful if West Elm stayed here forever. But if, in fact, you don't and somebody else ends up moving into this space, there's an opportunity for some display here that I'm concerned will, we won't have any control over. And it could be anything from an electronic sign inside of that building to naked people running back and forth to catching attention or.
Why can't you prohibit any signs at all?
We can do that.
Do you want to direct staff to put some?
Prohibit signs, period.
A condition of approval, we're, we're fine with that.
Okay. No window signs?
Without prior approval or?
Well.
Would you say no window signs?
I mean, it's some, it could, it, can we limit something of that drastic of nature to, to the upper portion that he's referring to as being?
Well, I thought I heard.
We're talking about the display, I'm talking about the display case.
Okay, but I thought I heard you just say you don't do window signs anyway.
Typically, we don't. I mean, if we have, if we're having a sale, maybe one window have a sale.
Letters that were 15 feet tall that said, "Sale," something simple like that. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about something that turns into advertising for AT&T or for Gap or it becomes a billboard. I don't want this to turn into a billboard. I want it to function for your use, but I don't want it to turn into an advertising billboard. And I just want, I know the.